8:4 at 9:03 a.m. First, we have the reappointments for the Roscommon County Transit Authority Executive Director Steve.
Morning, everybody. We have three board members that are expiring appointments, so I'm looking at all like to be reappointed. And those three are Roland Cliffwood, Tony Valentino, and Mike Perkey. Sweet.
Okay.
Reappointing, please?
Yeah.
Three this year.
Any questions for him? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Small Business Support Hub, Small Business Services Executive Director Lisa McComb. Not online. Mm-hmm. Okay. You could go to Priority Health Renewal. Jennifer Pedersen with Advantage Benefits Group, Jennifer Seaman, Priority Health, and Kelly Stone, Priority Health.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is Jennifer Pedersen with Advantage Benefits Group, our third-party administrator. And then Jen Seaman from Priority.
And Tina.
Can you guys hear us?
There we go.
Testing. Good morning.
Oh, okay.
I apologize.
I'm sorry, it's hard. Do you guys want us to just go ahead?
One second, is Tina there too? Tina, are you there?
Yes, I am. Good morning.
Very good. Hi, good morning, Tina. Okay.
Great. And we also have Kelly Sandy on the line, but her video is not working this morning.
Okay, that's all right. Kelly Sandy is also with Priority.
I'm sorry, I don't know who Tina is.
Who is Tina?
So Tina, Jen, and Kelly are all with Priority Health. And Jen essentially is their director, and then Kelly and Tina report, and they all support Roscommon.
All right, so they're going to talk a little bit about our renewal. Like we discussed, we were hoping to be able to talk to underwriters. They haven't been able to be able, you know, they're very, very busy this time of year. So Jen, Tina, and Kelly have really stepped up and helped to help us get some questions answered. But they can go over basically what's driving our renewal and a little bit of other things. So go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, good morning. I do have a presentation. Oh, I'm not able to share it. Just do you, would you like me to send it to you or can someone disable the screen sharing?
They're working on it, Jen.
They're working on it.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead and try.
Okay. Okay, okay, we're getting there. How does that look, folks? Okay, okay, just rearranging my screen here. As we all know, we've kind of done this before. I can't really see anything in the room, so my team will have to assist with. Any questions that you guys might have? But by way of introductions, as Jen said, my name is Jen Seaman. I am the Senior Director of our mid-large commercial group market at Priority Health. And I reside in northern Michigan. I live in Traverse City. And then I've got two members of my team, Tina and Kelly. Would you mind just giving a quick introduction, please?
Yep, Tina Poindexter, I'm the manager of the mid-large market and reside in Traverse City as well.
Kelly Sandy, I'm the county exec that works with Jennifer and Katie at ABG, and I live in Traverse City as well.
All right, so wanted to just dive in. Was there a question? I'm sorry.
It's just an echo, Jen.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thanks, Tina. Okay, so just wanted to dive in first of all. You know, today, the purpose of today's meeting, as was shared, is we really want to share some information regarding your renewal. Specifically, what's driving your renewal directly related to your claims, your individuals, the members that are on your plan. After that, Tina is going to share some information about our trends, really what's impacting from a macro level, right? Because we've got stuff that's impacting you at the group level, but then in the whole industry, right? We can't watch television without hearing about some of these GLP-1s and Wegovy and different things that are impacting the entire healthcare system from a rate renewal perspective and trends, market conditions in the market. So I'm going to share some information on that. And then Kelly is also going to wrap us up with some other information from your group level, specific information. So really, we have just three slides here today for you. And, you know, at first, I just want to thank you for, you know, your business for being loyal Priority Health customers. We know that delivering a 50% renewal increase is really challenging for all of us. And we just really thank you for your business at Priority Health. We do have a lot of information, and your group really has a lot of high-cost claimants. So we're going to dive into that a little bit more and talk about that a little bit here. But first, as you look at your group from a group-level perspective, we say your group is 83% credible. And what that means is that 83% of your renewal is developed based upon your own experience, right? So the county of Roscommon, it's your claims experience. There's 17% that is, that's called the community rating factor. And the community rating factor is what's going on all around us, right? So really, most of your renewal is based upon your own individual experience at the county of Roscommon. Over the last 12 months, you are, you're seeing an increase, right? And I know our friends at ABG have a lot of information to share with you as well. They do great analytic information to tell you about how your group is running. You know, we've seen your MLR, it's been over 100%. So what that means too is your medical loss ratio. So from an insurance perspective, you know, every, if we pay out a dollar, your current MLR is 155. So for every, every dollar that we collect, we're paying out $1.55. So we're really not able to balance, you know, the cost of your, your, your claims information, right? And things in all the claims that are coming in with the premiums that we're getting because your MLR is very high. It has been over 100% since 2021. So we really have been trying to provide some, you know, reasonable increases over the years, hoping that your claims will trend out, right? That they will improve over time and just not seeing that this year, especially with the spike up to 155% MLR. You do have 13 high-cost claimants, which is very high for, you know, it's about 11% of your members on your plan. That's very high for a group, your size, for a group, your size, we typically see one, maybe two high-cost claimants, right? So we've got 13 in the last 12 months. And there's 10 high-cost claimants in the prior 12 months. So from an underwriting perspective, we do look at two years of claims data to develop your renewal. So they talk about the most recent 12 months and then the prior 12 months, right? Going back two full years. And even when you look back two full years, there's 10 high-cost claimants. So when we look at the 13 high-cost claimants, those actually equal over $1.6 million in claims. So really, really hot driving that. And then, you know, in the, in the 10 high-cost claimants from months 13 to 24, those are, you know, over 900,000 in claims. So we've got some high-cost claimants on your plan that are really driving that, that overall increase for you. So I will take a pause there. Are there any questions before we move on to the next slide that I can answer?
What are the reasons for the loss rate has gone so high? I mean, that's astronomical, 155%? I mean, what are the reasons? There's got to be some analytics that have been done on that, and why the reasons, what, you know, why has it gone so high?
Other than the high claimants?
What's that?
The high claimants and the premium. So if this premium is exceeded by high claimants, that's a loss ratio. Why does it go so high?
Yeah, why, why are there so many more claims being processed this year? What are the, what is the reason? Is everybody getting sick? I mean?
Well, I mean, just to speak to what Jen was saying, and I don't want to take their, you know, under here, but we've studied this data as well. You've got an aging population with a very rich benefits, so there is no reason not to utilize the health plan. And then you add in their chronic disease states, and anybody reads a newspaper, our country's filled with chronic disease. So it's a perfect storm of not collecting enough premium to cover the claimants, rich, high plan, and aging population.
But why would that happen in a year?
It's happened over three years. Your loss ratio has been high for three years. We've negotiated out with Priority, tried to.
I mean, this is going to blow our budget right out of the water.
No, we understand, and there's some, there's ideas, and there's ways that we're going to try to manage this. But this has been going on for three years. It's not like, oh, my gosh, this is out of the blue.
So is one of the answers to get rid of some of our aging, we offer some buyouts to get our people out of, and bring in some younger people? I mean, I've.
No, because that would be illegal, right?
No, it's not illegal. You could, no, 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 you can offer buyouts. You can offer buyouts to get people you know, off the, off the work roles.
We have an interesting population. We could dig down to it, and it's no individual. We're never going to pick on an individual. The bottom line is, people are looking at what's best for them. If they have a, if they're 66 years old, I'm not even, I don't even know, I have no data in front of me right now. But if you have an employee 66 years old and they have a 58-year-old spouse, they're going to keep working on the plan because they don't have any access to any other insurance other than the marketplace. This plan is so rich, they would rather forego Medicare to keep their spouse on this plan.
So, so as I see it, because we offer such a rich plan to our employees, to bring them on board, it's going to end up driving county budget into the ground. That's, that's, that's the way I see it. In other words, we're offering so much to keep these employees on, and they're being, they're having, they're being able to take advantage of our great health plan is one of the reasons that we offer a great health plan. It looks like it's going to end up driving the budget into the ground.
One thing I would add is, I've always been told, I work with a lot of municipalities, that there's a balance there. You're only benchmarking the health plan as a rich plan. We don't know where the retirement plan is. We don't know where the base pay is. You know what I'm saying? We, I'm not looking at the total compensation package of Roscommon employees. So I don't, I don't have that overall view, Eric.
Right, well, I I know that what I'm always hearing to keep our employees on board with us is that we give them big benefits. Okay, and this is a big benefit. And maybe it's time that we start cutting back on some of the benefits.
Let's let her finish so that we can see all of our options.
Questions that I'm bringing, I'm bringing up.
Yeah, and that's.
I mean, I'm concerned because I think this is going to blow our budget right out of the water. This is a major portion, a major portion of our budget.
We're all concerned. I just want to hear everything that they have to say. And these guys don't necessarily have all the answers.
It's the facts. I understand, and I'm not, you know.
Absolutely.
Okay, go ahead.
They've got, they've got lots of insight for us, and so.
Okay, cool.
Great questions. I think, I think we are, are all concerned, right? We've talked with, you know, ABG and Jen and her team and really have some alternate plan options that would be great alternatives, great options, right, for you in the future. So we are all, we are all concerned. I agree with your statement there. But we'll, we'll move on. Just some other stuff, and I'm going to toss it over to Tina on my team just to talk a little bit about more trends, right? What's impacting the overall marketplace, the landscape, really quick in the health insurance industry? Tina?
Yes, so this is, increase in healthcare costs is impacting all groups across the state of Michigan, all carriers, as well as nationally. So an increased utilization of medical services has jumped since the pandemic and reflecting a decrease in the overall population's health and the need more, for more services. People delayed services throughout the pandemic, and that is increasing utilization. Especially in inpatient care, hits increased dramatically as well as cost. So, for example, Roscommon's increased 103% year-over-year in cost for inpatient stays. So you've just had more expensive services over the past year treating more extensive diseases. And then there's been a significant rise in outpatient and pet professional services. Again, this is overall the trends that Priority Health and other carriers are seeing. And for Roscommon, that increased 51% in outpatient services as well in cost, as well as an increase in use, and just a small spike in professional. And then there's continued growth of behavioral health accessing services. And that has increased in, by 20% overall, in particular for your group. And then escalating pharmacy costs is another driver of higher trends in the industry. So the cost of medications rising, as well as a big spike in use of antidiabetics, as well as dermatological, and some regulatory terminations of some pharmacy programs. And, and there's less rebate of the market, which Priority Health uses a rebate for a fully funded group across the board to decrease our overall increases, as well as inflationary prices and new therapeutic innovations. There's new treatments for different conditions, and which are great and very beneficial, but very expensive. Jen mentioned GLP-1s treating diabetes. Those cost approximately $1,000 per month per person. And we've seen utilization increase overall by 27% in 2024. With Roscommon's plan, there are 17 members with approximately $75,000 in cost just for those GLP-1s. We only cover the diagnosis of diabetes. We don't cover it for weight loss. So that helps mitigate any cost that your plan would have, although the cost is, and use is just increasing. Just to give you a stat in the Medicare space, just that, that's been analyzed across the nation. And GLP-1 cost in 2018 was 57 million, and in 2022, it was $5.7 billion. So this is definitely a space that we are watching and trying to determine how to try to control those costs moving forward. At the, you know, at the national level, we are advocating for that. And then cost of new treatments, emerging therapies are expected to continue to rise. Example, gene therapies. Luckily, there is no gene therapy in your group at this time, but there are more than 20 treatments awaiting FDA approval right now. We currently cover 17 gene therapy drugs. And the prices range from $850,000 to $5 million per medication treatment for that. There's our life-changing, life-saving medications, but they commented extremely high cost. So all of those things are impacting trends in the healthcare industry overall. Some impacting your group specifically more than others, but it does impact our overall medical and pharmacy trends. And Kelly, do you want to move on to the next?
Thanks, Tina. Working with ABG, we have some alternative plan design options that will mitigate that increase by half, if not more, depending on the plan design that Roscommon looks at implementing for 2025. There are traditional non-HRA plans, similar deductibles that you're used today, between 45 and $5,500 deductibles that can reduce the increase to 20 to 25%, depending on the plan design that's elected. A newer one would, what we call high deductible health plans. You'll hear in the marketplace, HSA plans. This is a product that will engage your employees and their family members. The intent is for folks to compare costs for labs, high-tech images, outpatient, inpatient type services, as well as costs of medications. This product, we have deductibles ranging from $1,650 up to $3,300. And this would reduce the increase to 15 to 32%, depending on the plan design elected. The last plan is a plan we call the value plan. Again, this will engage your employees as well. But what's nice about this product is that for those basic services, like your primary care physician, it offers that 100% coverage in that lower-cost setting for services done in their primary care office. The other component that's nice about this product, telehealth, which is the virtual option, whether it's in your primary care specialist or behavioral health that offers this, those services are covered at 100% versus going into a brick and mortar that would cost a little bit more for members. Lastly, on this plan, of course, you would still have copays ahead of deductible, which would be a great option for your employees as an option to look at. The deductibles that were quoted were anywhere from a $2,000 deductible up to $3,000, and it reduces the increase to 13 to 19%, depending on the plan design that is of interest for you guys. Basically, the next step would be for ABG to provide you the all the options for review and discussion at future point in time to be able to look at those alternatives. So some good options to be able to look at to mitigate the, the increase.
We can open it up for questions or Jen, or anything else that, you know, we didn't touch on that you wanted to highlight today?
And Jody, no, I'll chime in where you, you know, perhaps go further stop. There's two dynamics that are, there's something else in the cost here. You probably are all familiar with this, but we've purchased these, we collectively, the county has purchased these deductible plans. We finance those plans through what's called a health reimbursement account, meaning the county pays the deductibles and the own insurances. So it nets out to no cost other than copays for employees. So we've got, when Tina just went through, or rather Kelly just went through the plan designs, we would also be talking about the loss of that health reimbursement account, or how much do you impact that health reimbursement account? We put that full deductible onto the employee and remove that health reimbursement account? Or do we take that full deductible and we share a portion of that health reimbursement account? And then when they were talking about a health savings account, that's with an entirely different type of plan. That's called a qualified plan. And that means by the IRS, it's dictated that everything has to go to the deductible first. After the deductibles met, the plan starts paying. So I fill my own prescriptions, I pay for it. I go to the doctor for my child's earache, I pay for it. If that full deductible, we have some ideas with, maybe you finance some of that account to help that individual pay that deductible, the individual, because you have a big chunk of people who don't use their benefits hardly at all, right? So those individuals wouldn't have a pretend-to-pay health reimbursement account. They'd have a real account called a health savings account that they would be able to roll and grow year over year. That's, that's becoming a very popular, for lack of better words, solution for organizations to say, we know we're going to get 13, 14 claims a year that are high, but everybody else is probably going to reach maybe 2 to 10% of their deductible in the year. Because we're all going to be at some point that high claimant, perhaps. But year over year, if you have an opportunity to save for when that year is when I'm going to be that high claimant, that's a good strategy. So what they were saying there was, these are our base plans, but you have to still decide how are you going to help those base plans from a perspective of the employee with a health reimbursement account or health savings account? So I just wanted to tell that, the other side of that story to what was explained to you by Tina, or rather Kelly.
So from what I understand, okay, from last year and this year, we have the health savings account that is paying the employees deductibles, correct? Or the reimbursement? And you're mentioning that we can come up with a plan to share that, because right now, there's, I get a little bit of a sniffle, I'm going to the doctor. Hey, it's being paid for by the county. What incentive do I have? Okay, just to step back, I'm looking at this from a business standpoint. We have to run this as a business. The county has to run this as a business. And that, I think that's a great idea that you've come up with, to have the employee pay for part of that as opposed to having it all paid out of the county fund. So that's one way to cut it down. We're going to have to, I mean, I'm blown away with 153% over three years. That, that's just unbelievable to me that, how do you guys stay in business?
Well, I mean, I tell you, I think Priority's been an outstanding.
I mean, who, who has?
Priority Health has been a very good partner for the county. I mean, they were.
I mean, but they can only do that for so long.
Precisely. That's why they're here. That's why they care. We're an independent broker. Our job is to evaluate everybody else that's out there that has something to offer. And we do that because our client is you folks. Their client is you folks, but, you know, at the end of the day, we're the one that's touching all the other vendors. They only pay attention to Priority in terms of their sales team. So at the end of the day, they, over the years, and I'm happy to share it, we get a renewal, and then we look at the marketplace, and then we go back and say, here's what we know. We know that some of the high claimants have left the plan. That, you know, whatever we're, we're kind of massaging, we go back and then they come back with a final. So that's why we've been able to maintain priority, and that's been good for the membership. Because it's hard to change a health plan. And they have different rules, they cover different medications, they cover different doctors. It's not an easy transition to go Blue Cross Priority Health, Blue Cross Priority Health. It's hard on folks. So they've been an excellent partner in trying to get this down. And so this isn't easy on anybody to deliver, because you're right, Eric. At the end of the day, if you keep running that 150% loss ratio, you will, that company would go out of business. And all we have is Blue Cross in the state of Michigan, and that would be very scary. So I'm not saying that Priority is going to be the right fit going forward. I'm not saying they're not, but they've worked really hard to stay as the best partner they can, within the means of your budget.
Right, because right now, we've got the Cadillac of plans, and everybody knows it for our employees. And I'm not going to make any friends with our, with our county employees, but we're going to have to do something about this. We're sharing the deductibles, so there's an incentive to hold back on going to the doctor if I, you know, stub my toe or, you know, things like that, or my kid gets a little bit of a sniffles. And that's all important. And it's great to have, to be able to do that, but, but there's a cost associated with it. And we can't keep asking the taxpayers, and frankly, the taxpayers aren't going to give us an increase in billages when we, when we've got these kind of plans set up for our employees. And there's got to be a way for us to incentivize people that are on the high end, that are, that are, that are spending a lot of these dollars to have them work out of, work out of our plan somehow. Like you said, we've got an older population, working population. The younger part of our employees are not using very much of our healthcare. So I think we need to sit down and take a look at that type of thing. I mean, I hope everybody here is as concerned as I am. I mean, we, I haven't heard anything from anybody else. I mean, I haven't heard anything from anybody else, but, you know, I hate to be the bearer of bad news. I'm, you know, I'm in a lame duck session here, so I can speak as a taxpayer and a commissioner, okay? We're going to have to do something about this.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yes.
We really have top show of people here. I'm going to lean on the clip to acknowledge yourself, Noel, Jody, and Joe, and these are department heads. At the end of the day, I hear what you're saying, but, you know, we're not going to be prejudiced toward people if they have a high claimant.
It isn't being prejudiced. It's not being prejudiced, it's just running it as a business.
I felt, I felt that you were being negative toward people that may be, may be a high claimant. I thought you might be negative toward people that have a, have a high claimant. I felt that.
Adam Chair.
Yes.
Noel, are you going to present some plan options to us then? Is that what we're going to be seeing coming in the future?
Yes.
And are we going to poll our employees to see what's important to them?
Yes, in fact, I have a survey in the works currently. We're finishing touches on it right now, and that'll be going out by the end of the week.
And I assume the options presented are going to be in line with budget.
That is our hope.
You're welcome. You're welcome. That's all? Any other questions? Really want to thank Jen and Tina and Kelly for coming today, your time and effort, we're very much appreciated.
Thanks, Noel.
And of course, yeah, thank you. And obviously to Jennifer here, she is definitely a huge advocate for us and is always helpful, even when I called her on Friday afternoon to ask a question, and she was at home. She's always there for us, so thank you.
And Chair.
Yes.
Thank you for your honest and thorough assessment. Thank you.
I believe that Lisa McCombe is here, so we will go back up to the Small Business Support Hub, Small Business Services.
Hi. Happy to meet you. I apologize, I have more brochures, but I hope I assign you that a minute, and I land too, so please share these. Okay, I will get more to Jim Thursday, next Thursday, when I see him. I'm here to just explain about a great benefit for Roscommon County. I'm Lisa McCombe, I'm the Executive Director with that Seago County Economic Alliance. And we got a grant through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation in January for two years, utilizing ARPA funds to serve as the Small Business Support Hub for six counties. And what that means is we are providing entrepreneurial support free, confidentially through a consultant that we were able to hire full-time with the grant funds to go out into the six communities and work with small businesses. And so I'm out doing a roadshow, if nothing better, but just to let the county know that you may see us in the community, and it's only for this program. We also do a small, my tri-share program for daycare, for assisting with those expenses for employees. But I want to make sure that the commissioners in the county know why we're here and what we're doing. This small support hub program has three components. One is providing entrepreneurial, dedicated entrepreneurial support to our local small businesses. Most counties on average in our region, about fifty-eight to sixty percent of their businesses, including at Seago County, are businesses with less than nine employees. And there are independent businesses that really support our communities. She can meet with any business owner with any question to help them. It's confidential and it's free. So right now, we're seeing a lot of small businesses who, coming into the fall, are looking at upgrading equipment or are looking at either expanding or reducing payroll or expenses. A lot of times, we have business owners out there running the show on their own and have no idea how to do it. They may go to a bank, and a bank may say, you need a business loan. They're like, I don't know how to write a business loan, we can help. Or you need projections, we can help. Or you're looking at incorporating because you're a DBA, we can help. So if, I would ask for your partnership and support in getting out to business owners locally throughout the county and letting them know it exists and that they have this opportunity as they're going forward. Like I said, I apologize, I don't have any more of these pamphlets with me, but I will get them to you. The other two components of the program, one is a business incubator that we're trying to launch, and we're open to whether we do that in each community or each county. Are y'all familiar with what a business incubator is? Okay, so we are hoping to develop those small businesses that we're seeing aging out and not able to continue to provide services to our communities. Accountants, engineers, architects, marketing, service providers like therapists and things like that, that I know in our county, if you come in and you're a developer and we encourage you to use local contractors and services, you are going to have two architects to choose from, and you're going to wait six months. That's not good for our economy, it's not good for the things that we continue to do economically. So the business incubator program is one other component of that, of this small business hub. The third is, we did also get four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars that we will be putting out in small grants, starting in 2025. Every county will get some based on population and percentage of the overall, overall population as a whole for those six counties. It's very similar to what we did, we were also the administrator during COVID for the three small business programs that went out through MEDC. And we'll reach out to, to the communities and look for representatives that want to help us. Look at those applications. Nobody knows your community better than you do. I'm not going to want to look through your lay applications, because I'm not going to know, is this business successful? Do they look like they're going to continue to be in operation? Can they continue to utilize the funding and benefit their organization? So we're going to develop criteria for the eligibility and application come January, probably require workshop attendance of one or two times, and then look at applications with reward probably in the fall. So those grants can be up to twenty thousand dollars. It's going to be up to you guys on how you deploy that. You could decide we're going to do five thousand dollar grants, we're going to do ten thousand and make more impact, whatever you decide. So that will be forthcoming out of this program too. But I just want to make you aware of it, I'm getting out to the communities, I've spoken at the village already. I want to get out to, you know, Higgins Lake and Holton Lake and all the other areas. But we hope that you'll partner with us to get the word out. We want to do some advertising and some press, and we want to make sure that the county's logo is a partner and a part of that as we do it. So I just am here to share the program. Any questions?
Yes.
I have, yep. I talked to Brenda, do you have, I know she, I know the village didn't go through on that, correct? Yeah, so we still will be working with her through Michigan Works to get the programming out. Do you have an active economic development commission in place? Okay, I'd love to get in front of that as well. So if you, if somebody can get me a contact on who to connect with.
I'll meet with you after the break.
Okay, absolutely. Because the more people that are aware of it, the more businesses that will benefit, and it's free. Program goes to September twenty twenty-six. We're hoping by that time, we figure out a way to maybe keep this person in place to continue to do those services for those same counties, because she's building up that networking and, and providing resources that many of our smaller communities don't have, so.
Any other questions? I will leave a few business cards up here too, for anybody out here as well. And you're welcome to give me a call.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
With that said, this meeting will be adjourned, and our next one starts at ten o'clock. Roll call, please. Wolfson. So.
Here.
Astor Green.
Here.
Censor.
Here.
Here.
Approval of the agenda. In the consent agenda, I would like to remove item B, as we don't have claims and accounts this time around. And I would also like to add B, under unfinished business, the Higgins Lake Delegated Authority.
So move with corrections, man, Chair.
Discussion. Roll call. Astor Green.
Yes.
Censor. Yes. Wolfson. Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried. Approval of the consent agenda, we have meeting minutes from August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, Lake Level Control Structure Meeting, and our regular board meeting, correspondences A through C, which include MAC legislation updates and letters to the Boards of Commissioners, monthly department reports from the Roscommon County Sheriff, June twenty twenty-four revenue report, the EDC, June, July, and August report, and animal control and shelter stats, and our controller report. Do I have a motion?
No, man, Chair.
Clerk call roll, please. Wolfson.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Censor. Yes. Astor Green.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried. Register of deeds update. It'll be quick. So the waiting notification from the Bureau of Elections that the August sixth, twenty twenty-four primary election has been certified at the state level. With that being said, we do have the recount petition that I've received. So as of right now, we have the recount meeting scheduled for September fourth. That's assuming that the state certifies the election, and the forty-eight hour period for filing the recount on the state level has elapsed. Once that is set in stone, I will be contacting all parties that are required to be notified. I've received ballot proofs for the November election and plan to, it's still a work in progress, but I will be sending out proofs to candidates by the end of the week so that they can review their names on the ballots and return those responses to us. Last week, I attended the Michigan Association of County Clerks Conference, and one of the things, we already had received notification prior to this conference, but then they reminded me. So beginning September one, we have new applications for CPL folders. So it's now, instead of one application for all, it's separate applications for each, which is nice, because we actually have different information we need to capture regarding if it's a new applicant, a renewal applicant, or if it's an emergency CPL. So after September first, we are no longer allowed to accept any old forms. So if people come in and they've gotten an old form after their class or whatever, we got to be like, here, got to do a new one. That's all I have right now. Thank you. Thank you. Public hearing. Hannah Daisinger, funding for Community Development Black Grant Program Income, PY twenty-two and PY twenty-three. Do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Roll call. Milburn.
Yes.
Astor Green.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm sorry, let's start this again. Hannah Daisinger, Housing Director, Roscommon County Housing. And I think we're going to start with the spreadsheet that shows the projects that we've done for the program year twenty twenty-two, which was fiscal year July one, twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. During that timeframe, we had program income available of one hundred eleven thousand and twenty-four dollars and eighty-six cents. Unfortunately, we were not able to utilize the entire amount, but I did do a breakdown for you per township. We were able to do a total of three projects for a total amount of twenty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixteen cents, of which we did one project in Garrish Township for furnace and pipes in the amount of seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty. We did two roof replacements, one in Lyon Township and one in Markey Township. The Lyon Township cost was eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixteen cents, and the Markey Township was nine thousand, seven hundred and forty. We were able to retain out of that total, four thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and thirteen cents we could keep back for administration, which is eighteen percent of the amount that we have actually utilized. We had to return to the state of Michigan eighty thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-seven cents. And I am going to explain what was happening, because that is a huge chunk of money. Well, one thing is the program guidelines that Roscommon County had in place or has still in place until it's adopted is that we put a limit of ten thousand dollars as a cost for a project. Those guidelines were established years ago, and even for emergency projects, that is not a reasonable amount. I had four, I believe, four applicants that needed a well. A well will cost an average of fifteen thousand dollars. I had estimates ranging from thirteen to seventeen thousand dollars. So those projects I had to reject because it did not meet the ten thousand dollar limit, unless the homeowner had the difference, which they don't, that's why they come to us. So I am proposing, and I have made a change in the program guidelines to eliminate that ten thousand dollar limit on loans and on project cost. So I took that mention out of the program guidelines totally, so that way we could do those type of projects, we're not limiting ourselves. So having had four of those, that accounts for nearly seventy thousand dollars that I was not able to spend. I had two folks that were over income that applied, and I had a number, I want to say, more than half of applicant or, or potential applicants live in trailers that are with tie-downs. I am not able to assist at all as a MISHDA guideline, there's nothing we can do about it. I have tried. MISHDA came to me and asked if we have a zoning ordinance throughout Roscommon County for trailers, and because we do not, they're not changing that requirement. That is a state requirement, and unfortunately, you know, folks that live in trailers with tie-downs. Now, if they have a permanent foundation, I might be able to help, but those are more than likely mobile or manufactured homes like double wides. Those are different. What we're talking about was single wide trailers on tie-downs. So that kind of gives So that kind of gives you a little explanation why there was so much money to be returned. I know that I sent the revised program guidelines for distribution on July 30th. I had some other housekeeping changes in the program guidelines, one of which was that MISHDA took over October 1st, and MEBC was the previous funding state agency. So I made all the change for that. And I also replaced the fair housing resolution date to the newer date since the new one was adopted last year. Does anybody have any questions on the closeout for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program Income Fiscal Year 2020?
Yes.
Thanks for being here. I feel uncomfortable that there's no cap. We're going to recommend with no cap. What would be a reasonable cap to put on? There should be some number. Even if it's high, there should be at least some number for the taxpayers to know that there's a guideline. What do you recommend would be a good cap?
Okay, generally speaking, caps that we usually go by is for full rehabilitation, we use $40,000 as a cap. But for emergency repairs, because those are smaller repairs, if there's no mention, yes, it makes it wide open. But then again, we require three, two to three estimates. And I work in another county. So if an estimate comes in that is way out of line for the work that needs to be done, I would probably not do the project. So in other words, if somebody comes in and they want to do a well that I know is about $15,000 and they want a $40,000 job, I would probably reject them anyway. But it is up to you guys if you want to put a limit on there. And since I work in another county, we don't mention it in the program guidelines because once you put it in your program guidelines, have to adhere to it. And because of inflation, I'm not so sure that's a good idea to put something in. Does that make sense? Because then you are literally handcuffing yourself, just what happened this year.
Well, I obviously hate, with your permission, manager, I hate to see us sending money back to the state that we could have utilized, but I still would feel comfortable with some kind of cap, whether that cap was $40,000 or $15,000 or something. But just to keep government honest, it's just good to have some kind of cap. Just my thoughts, but I would go with the collective intelligence of the board and your recommendation, what a reasonable cap would be.
Again, you know, like I said, for full rehab, the cap usually is $40,000 or has been $40,000 in the past. Emergency projects, it depends on what it is. If a foundation has to be replaced in a home, it can cost $40,000.
Could we write the verbiage to make those qualifications?
Excuse me?
Could we, could we write the verbiage to make those recommendations?
I can add the limits back in, sure.
I like the idea of a recommendation so we can keep government honest. I'll lean to my colleague to the right who's a businessman also. How do you feel about Eric?
I guess every situation is different. So how do you have a, I don't know how you'd do a cap. Maybe we could or not. I don't know. What do you, what do you believe? But I mean, you're involved in it on a day-to-day basis.
That's why I said.
I would think it would be hard to, hard to establish a cap.
That's exactly right. That's why I'm saying, you know, that's why we require those estimates. So that's what I mean. If a contractor puts down, I want wow, and I want $40,000. And I see other people, their average is $15,000 or $17,000, we're not going to go with that anyways.
You mentioned that you get two or three estimates. Is it two or three?
A minimum of two. We would like to see three.
Madam Chair.
Maybe that could, I mean, maybe that could be increased a little bit. Of course, there might not be that many people in business to do that many estimates. And you do the comparison between.
Makes sense.
Yes.
Madam Chair. We're talking about a cap on emergency repairs. Okay, an emergency repair is not going to be $40,000. That's not an emergency. That was something that was ongoing. So I would suggest we put a cap of like $20,000 or $25,000 on an emergency repair.
Emergency repair isn't drilling a well.
Well, you're all with what, why? But, but anything that amounts to $40,000, no, we seen it coming. You know, it's something that let go or whatever. Emergency repair is kind of different.
Septics aren't, what was the average septic system run?
You could spend $10,000 easy.
Yeah, I was going to say that.
So if we had a cap of $20,000, $25,000 for emergency repairs, I would feel comfortable with that.
An emergency repair.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
I sat on the Housing Commission Board for 12 years or so. I like to see emergency, you know, because I've seen a lot of them over the years come in, set at $25,000. I think that's very fair.
You like that, Mark?
I, yeah, I appreciate it.
I can deal with that.
Appreciate some discussion and debate because obviously you guys are businessmen. I've worked for the government my entire life. So $25,000 sounds good to me.
They cover, they would cover any well, deep well, it would cover any septic, any roof, you know.
Would a, would a deep well be considered an emergency drilling in a well?
Yeah, yeah. If they don't have water, yeah.
No water, electricity, or heat.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just like to, some idea of a cap. Something it could be, it keeps government honest.
I can revise it and put it back in and make it a 25, but it was at $10,000. That really, really limited. I got estimates in for wells and they're like 15 on average. I mean, the lowest estimate was between $13,000 and $14,000. And I go back to the homeowner and say, can you come up with the $3,000? And if they couldn't, I.
What do they do? What do they do? They got to have.
They go without, Eric.
Wouldn't that be condemned then?
No, there's a lot of residents in this county that.
Yeah, thanks, Rex.
More than you could imagine.
Thanks, Eric. Yeah, that was good.
Okay, so that would be the closeout for program year 2022. And now we can do the PowerPoint presentation for program year 2023, which would be fiscal July 1, 2023, to June 30th, 2024. And this is for the Roscommon County Michigan Community Development Block Grant Fund. Program income also emergency repairs only. Roscommon County, through the Roscommon County Housing Department, which was formerly your Housing Commission, has been utilizing CDBG funds since approximately 1988. And we've been funding homeowner rehabilitation projects as, as well as emergency projects to low and moderate income homeowners. Homeowners are required to repay, repair, repay, excuse me, project costs in whole or in part back to the county. That is what is considered program income as it comes back. CDBG is a federally funded program under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974. And it's based on HUD Regulation 24 CFR 570.489E. And these funds generate program income to Roscommon County through the collection of those loan balances. Program income is defined as principal and interest payments on those loans and interest earned on CDBG local revolving loan funds, proceeds from sale, disposition, or long-term lease of any privately owned property or equipment purchased or improved in whole or in part with CDBG funds. What that means is if $1 from CDBG goes into a project, it is considered CDBG funded. Any PI or program income that's collected each year from July 1 through June 30th, which is the federal fiscal year, that is in excess of $35,000 retains its federal designation and must be spent on CDBG eligible activities as defined by HUD and MISHDA. MISHDA currently requires program income to be used only for emergency projects. In fiscal year 2023, we have generated a total amount of $36,347.74. So I rounded it up to $36,348 that we're going to be using for program for emergency projects this year. Next slide, please. Homeowner rehabilitation emergency projects are the only ones that we can do with this money. And that is defined and approved by MISHDA. The funding that's to be used is countywide to income eligible homeowners with gross incomes at or below 80% area median income based on HUD CDBG income guidelines for Roscommon County. The funding will benefit all residents of the project area, which would be Roscommon, all of the county, countywide. No person will be displaced as a result of the proposed activities and at least 51% of low to moderate income persons will benefit from this funding. Next slide, please. I'm going to give some examples of eligible emergency projects. The definition of an emergency under MISHDA's regulations is as follows. Emergency repairs are performed to safeguard against imminent danger to human life, health, or safety, or to protect property from further structural damage due to natural disaster, fire, or structural collapse. Some of the examples would be roof repairs or replacement, a malfunctioning hot water or heating equipment, which would be furnace repairs or water heater repairs or replacement, plumbing repairs in cases where supply or drainage lines have ruptured, wells, septic tanks, and drain fields, electrical or gas repairs in electrical or gas hazard situations, structural damages that creates an emergency safety situation, emergency handicap accessibility improvements, or any other emergency item with prior approval from MISHDA. There could be some areas where I have to contact MISHDA to see if it falls under their guidelines. Next slide, please. Now here are some highlights of the local program guidelines. All projects must be within the county of Roscommon. Projects must meet the definition of an emergency project. Units must be at least five years or older and homeowners must have owned the unit for at least one year, must be insured, all property taxes paid, and repairs on single white mobile homes without permanent foundation are not eligible for funding. Now I'm going to add to this that is not on the slide is that there is going to be the limit of $25,000 per project as you guys discussed earlier. The homeowners must be income eligible, which will be verified. Our income limits do change annually, usually in May and June of each year, and they're publicized by HUD.
What are they right now?
I have them on the website. It's based per.
I mean, you can give them just.
For one, I think, because I just gave a number to somebody for a single person, 80% AMI is, I believe, $44,006. But it's on our website. All of the income limits are publicized on Roscommon's website. You must have at least two to three estimates from a licensed and insured contractor, and contractors must meet HUD and MISHDA guidelines. Next slide, please. We do have a CDBG citizen participation plan that we have updated in September of last year, and it is available upon request. And I am the contact person for this plan if anybody from the public or even the board is interested to look at it again. There's no information as far as telephone number and email. Next slide, please. Because we are using HUD money, we have to also consider fair housing. The fair housing policy resources are available upon request. At each closing, I give out pamphlets to every homeowner pertaining to fair housing. And the fair housing policy is available at the county housing office, including pamphlets. And I am again the contact person if you have any fair housing issues. Contact is on, wide, and now I'm open for questions. Comments?
Questions, comments?
You answered my questions.
One question I would ask, Madam Chair, and I hate to ask a question I don't know the answer. Should we make a motion in regard to the $25,000 or do we just make a note?
Well, we're in a public hearing, so we brought.
No, I'm just down the road. How should we handle that?
I have no idea. I would say they just adopt the guidelines as the board with that $25,000 in there at your next meeting.
Sounds good. I just want to make sure before we left.
Yeah, I'll revise it, send it out to Joe for you to review. I'm just going to put that back in with the $25,000 limit and.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent information.
Thank you.
And now we would open it up for public comment. It must be pertaining to this topic only. Anybody for public comment?
The topic of MISHDA, not the.
Yes. No public comment then? Do I have a motion to exit the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Roll call, please. Ostergrin.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Censor. Yes.
Yes.
Russo.
I would give more public comment.
Yep, now we have our traditional public comment. Anybody for public comment? Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Cornell, currently a resident of Garrish Township and serving as the president of the Higgins Lake Property Owners Association, also known as HLPOA. For the record, and this is important, I want you to know that HLPOA is not a party of the lawsuit regarding Senate Bill 662, which is now Public Act 112. There have been misleading information out there disseminated to the public, which could lead people to believe that HLPOA is a party to that lawsuit. And we are not. I hope you'll share this with your constituents so everyone is clear that we are not party to this lawsuit. And I would thank you all for doing that, please, with your constituents. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to set the record straight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Anyone in Zoom? Visitors, do we have any visitors? Unfinished business. The Hilton Lake Special Assessment Prepayment Update. Just wanted to update everyone and let you know that all the payments have been entered and all receipts have been mailed out as of Monday, I believe it was. I would like to personally thank Jody, Joe, and Noel for the hard work that they put in in incorporating this into their day-to-day schedule. I know it was very overwhelming. I'd also like to thank Commissioner Wolfson. He was able to help when he was able to. Jamie Hauserman for setting up the BSA program. And Jenna for helping to input payments. The Treasurer's Office for all the deposits that were given to them and the payments that they processed in their office. I would just like to thank everybody. Sure.
Yo, you, and thank you also. You worked a lot of hours out of each of us. What was you? Thank you very much. I really appreciate that.
Thank you. And then we have B, Higgins Lake Delegated Authority.
You want me to handle that?
Yep, you wrote it.
Okay, in our last meeting, it was mentioned that the board is overseeing operations of the Higgins Lake structure at this point. We'd like to make it clear, we have not designated a delegated authority for that lake. As such, the County Board of Commissioners will be acting as the delegated authority for Higgins Lake. the County Board of Commissioners will be acting as the delegated authority for Higgins Lake. We have not assigned that to anyone else.
Any comment?
If you make a brief.
Yeah, it'd be real brief. No, that's exactly what I thought we did in our last meeting, so thanks for the clarification on that, Rex. But I wasn't confused at all as to, uh, the entire board was supposed to be in charge of the Higgins Lake Level Control Structure, although you were working with Jason, you know, trying to keep things up, and he was, you know, is part of the turnover process.
Well, the, the public needed to know too.
Yes.
New business, um, we don't have anything down, so motions and resolutions whenever our clerk is ready. Question number one, move to reappoint Chair Ucema Charo to the Blodgett Memorial Airport Advisory Committee for your term beginning four through December thirty first, two thousand twenty-six.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
She's a great pick. Glad to have her on the board.
Roll call? Censor?
Yes.
Wilson? Melbourne?
Yes.
Ostergrun?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Number two, move to enter into contract as presented and agreed to with the Roscommon County Commission on Aging for el- for eligible residents of Roscommon County. Voter approved village collection beginning in December twenty twenty-four through December twenty thirty-one.
So move in, Chair.
Discussion? Roll call? Russo?
Yes.
Ostergrun?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Yes.
Melbourne?
Yes.
Okay. Motion three, move to approve as requested by the E nine one one Authority Board, the system subscription agreement between Roscommon County Central Dispatch and Central Square Technologies LLC for the purpose of access and use of an integrated computer system consisting of a nine one one public safety answering point service. Total cost of proposed agreement to be one hundred fifty eight thousand, eight hundred sixty dollars and ninety one cents with annual fees of forty five thousand, three hundred forty dollars and ninety one cents.
So move.
Discussion? Roll call? Wilson?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Ostergrun?
Yes.
Melbourne?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Motion carried. Committee reports, Commissioner Ostergrun. Commissioner Melbourne?
Uh, I went to the EDC, where forthcoming as EDC morphs into a different type of, uh, plan as we, since the motions passed. I did go to NMCA. I'll be meeting with Heath Neiman, uh, Supportive Services for Veterans and Families type of view, overview. There's a lot of information they gave out, and I'm going to make sure I give it to the veterans, so we can work more closely with NMCA. That's all I had, Madam Chair, thank you.
Commissioner Russo?
I do not have a recall.
Um, I attended the agenda meeting last Thursday, August twenty-second, personnel meeting updates, and helped out with the Holton Lakes SAD receipting and documenting. And all of my other meetings that were scheduled were canceled for September, until, until September, I should say. Um, Commissioner Wilson?
Um, I attended the Northern Michigan Counties Association meeting that we hosted here. I think the most important thing was, we talked about how the opioid money is to be spent. It is not an easy process by any means, and it may be quite complicated, and we may not receive all the money we expected. Other than that, um, I have an update on the materials management plan. I have contacted Marissa Brown from Michigan Consulting Environment, who we contracted with. They began gathering current county recycling locations and statistics. In the coming weeks, they're going to do a walkthrough of the current drop-off locations and recycling centers, and they intend on starting the draft of the work program within the next couple of weeks.
Thanks. Board comment? Commissioner Ostergrun?
Well, thank you. You get to call on me first, huh, again?
I'm just going right to last.
Okay. I, I got a, a question and a comment. I was wondering why an email from last March from Bow Smith criticizing the Higgins Lake SAD was included in this week's documents. I don't know why a document that was five months old would be included in this week, but I'm just curious about that. Uh, water level update yesterday, August twenty-seventh. This is the week before Labor Day weekend, one of the biggest weekends we have here in Roscommon. Higgins Lake gauge is at five point zero six, which is three point seven two inches below legal level. Holton Lake gauges at eight point one eight, point nine six inches above legal level. Lake St. Helen gauges six point three five, one point three two inches above legal level. This is all from the USGS. Uh, I'm hoping that we can get back to mediation regarding the Higgins Lake level lawsuits. I think they can all be resolved shortly, as Jody mentioned in her uh, report to us, you know, there's some good progress has made. I don't think we're far off getting rid of all these lawsuits in one fell swoop. Uh, my contacts have told me that the mediator has been trying to contact the county's attorney, and has not returned his calls. I'm kind of disappointed in that. I'm hoping that changes. Uh, we're all ready, I think, at this board to get rid of all this litigation. I'm hoping those in charge are trying to work this out and are going to be willing to do so as well. Uh, additionally, I was happy to see that the county supports me in the criminal hearing that is coming up September twelfth. This is going to be my appeal, uh, before, uh, Judge Bennett. Uh, in the recent pleadings, in the county's recent pleadings in federal court, they stated, and I quote, "Historically, one member of the County Board of Commissioners has been designate- designated as the delegated authority," end quote, "will oversee the LLCs for all inland counties," end quote. That is what my defense during the criminal trial, which I feel fell on deaf ears, and the support in the county's pleading should have, uh, should help me in the upcoming appeal to Judge Bennett. I want to thank the board for the support. Of course, this also confirmed the testimony of prior Chairman Schneider, Chairman Russo, and Commissioner Rex Wilson. I'm looking forward to clearing my name before Judge Bennett in the upcoming appeal. Thank you.
Commissioner Melbourne?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Russo? Um, I believe, I haven't doubled, I haven't got confirmation, but I do believe that the Lake St. Helen prepayment letters are going to be going out this week. Again, I know it's going to be extra work, so I just wanted to thank everyone in advance. Commissioner Wilson?
Um, yeah, I'd like to reiterate some of what Eric said. Uh, we did make some progress on our last mediation, and I'd like to see a date come up real soon that we can continue mediation.
Do we have any public comment? Yes. State your name, make sure the green light is on, please.
My. I'm Emil Bellinbaum, Roscommon County resident, longtime uh, participant at the Commission on Aging. Uh, Mark was at the last meeting last Wednesday when they had a vote of six to two that they were not going to do a carryout meal. Uh, I was so disappointed at hearing that. I thank the board for the concern. Uh, I know I've brought this issue up several times in the past, and uh, they could do it, we found out, uh, at a previous meeting, uh, but no, they're not going to. So I thought I'd import that to you at this point in time. Uh, I think there are other issues that, uh, uh, the COA management has that, uh, uh, needs some attention, and I plan to pursue that. I'm, I just have one question about, uh, the contract that was signed. I don't know if it's signed today, okay, or you're just presenting it today? Or is it the same contract that was on the agenda at the last board meeting here? Uh, was there any wording changes?
I'll get with you after the meeting and that.
Thank you for your time.
Any other public comment? Anyone in Zoom? Okay. With no further public comment, this meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting starts at eleven o'clock. All in favor, say aye. Special meeting, um, for budget and finance called to order, um, at eleven oh two AM. Pledge allegiance. Roll call? Russo? Melbourne?
Here.
Ostergrun?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Censor?
Here.
Approval of the agenda.
Move in, Chair.
Discussion? Roll call? Ostergrun?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Melbourne?
Yes. Yes.
Great. Public comment for agenda items only. Is there any public comment? Okay. New business, the Roscommon County twenty twenty-four budget review.
You should get on to it. Oh, it's doing the wheel thing? Oh, okay. Well, it's, it's thinking.
Back him.
It could be the Wheel of Fortune. Not funny. Nope, nope, Andy's not laughing at all at me. Oh, thank you. There it is. Yeah, he's getting there. You should be able to go, yeah, that's it. Thanks, Andy. Um, so we are going to, at about sixty seven point seven percent of the fiscal year completed. This is as of yesterday's budget, so it's as, as up to date as it gets. Um, the only thing that is missing for the month of August would be, um, any finalized deposits for year end, or I'm sorry, for month end from our courts, obviously would not be represented. Um, anything that comes in on the thirty first for any type of payments that we get for electronic would not have been inputted yet into the budget through the treasurer's office. Um, and we do have, uh, actually three more workdays for you to collect money. So, yes, exactly. So there's a little bit more going on there, but overall, your, your percentage is sixty seven point seven percent of our fiscal year completed. Um, so we're at a, we're at a good spot for that. Um, if Andy would go to the next page, oh my gosh, look at you, you're so good. Okay, so this is just, um, an overview of our funds and revenues for each funds to date. Um, you'll notice that most of your special funds that have the millage are at or above a hundred percent collections. Um, that is because those were on the summer tax bills, which is where it comes in. Um, our general fund is lower because we come through on the winter tax bill. Um, I know we've discussed that the last few times, but overall, um, everybody is, is sitting pretty well in their actual revenues to date. There are some areas that are new budgets for this year that did not anticipate any, because we didn't have the budget in existence. There wasn't an approved revenue or, um, expenditure per say line item for those. That includes the MCOS Training Fund, which is the thirteen thousand dollars that we are getting in for the one cadet for the sheriff's office to attend the uh, KCC program, which he has started that this week. Um, and then our three Lake Level Control Structure Special Assessment districts. Um, if you take note, under the Holton Lake LLC SAD, you'll see there's a large number, um, eight thirty-three, uh, fifty, sixty-five. Ninety percent of that is the actual collections to date um, that have occurred for that actual fund, and then the remainder of that is what is left over from what was allocated by the Board of Commissioners. The next slide is just the pretty graph that comes along with this, so you can tell again where, um, you know, the largest majority of revenues by fund come in. Um, obviously, our County Road Commission that we already passed through for, uh, is almost equal to what our general fund is for the monies that they receive in. Um, our largest after is the Sheriff Road Control as it comes forward, um, nine one one, Central Dispatch, the Commission on Aging, let's assume a millage amount as Central Dispatch, that's at one mil roughly. Um, and then the others across the board. On our next slide.
Jody, on, if we were on pace, we'd be, all the line items that we were seeing earlier, those would be at, what, sixty-six percent or sixty-seven percent?
Sixty, yeah, sixty-seven.
Some of mine were way over and some of them were way unders.
Yep.
That's pretty typical.
Yeah. Depending on, um, especially for revenues, and that's just simply because of the tax collection, when the taxes are collected. So like for the general fund, we don't get the bulk of our winter tax collection until the billing comes out, so we'll collect for that on our summer bills, like your nine one one.
So those are all basically collections, not?
Correct. Most of those are millage, yeah, most of those are millage based, yeah. Now, on the fund, um, is where you can look to expect to see, um, anticipated of, you know, you really should not be above the sixty, sixty-seven percent basically of, of where it is. And for the most part, all of our funds are in line. Um, the Special Road Millage Fund, that was the voter-approved, um, uh, funding for the local roads, and obviously that is fully expended, plus what was left over last year as a carryover, um, because they do their work in the summer. So that is why that one is, is higher than you see. Um, animal shelter donation, um, they had a couple of projects that have been put through, through there, um, but their revenues actually exceed.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Do you have the bottom, the bottom line percentage average? Is that a?
Overall, for the funds, I don't, I don't do a.
For all the funds come words, because looking at them all, how do you, and I couldn't imagine in my head.
Um, I can get it for you on the spreadsheet.
I'm, I'm just curious, yeah.
Yeah, no, I don't know off the top of my head. Traditionally, it's right around like forty-five percent this time of year, overall. Um, but off the top of my head for that, I don't, I traditionally.
So it's roughly forty-five, to be on pace, we'd be sixty-six, but a lot of stuff is coming in, like you said, for the, uh.
Correct.
And on the taxes, okay.
Yep. And the, uh, Animal Control Millage Fund, which is Fund four one three, that one's at a hundred percent. That is where the millage money is collected, and that millage money is transferred over to the Animal Control Program Fund of two one three. And that's actually, this is actually the last year, we're going to be collecting it like that, because we don't have to do that anymore. On the next slide, same thing, you can see our overall fund expenses to date, which of our funds have received the most, received the most money, um, and cost the most money to operate. Obviously, your general fund is, um, your largest in there, and that includes all of our um, statutory services, treasurer's office clerks, um, courts offices, and any of the support services that go along with that.
Jody, I apologize again.
That's okay.
So the gray, the gray is the total for the year, and that's the other is what we collected.
Yep, the long, the long line is, the long line is the one that was what we budgeted, what we have budgeted for expenses, and the shorter line is the, what we're at actually, so. So overall, especially for the general fund, we're actually overall doing pretty well, is what you can see. Um, little bit more into the general fund on the next slide. So this actually has the percent to date breakdown for all of those one-on-one general funded departments, um, which, like I said, these are mostly your primary, um, statutory and support that come along with that. So basically what this shows, Michelle, you're doing great. Where are you at? Oh, that's your projected. So, oh, see now, I gotta go back, Michelle, messed me up. Okay, so there are four columns on here, and that's what Michelle was asking. So what I have done, because it's the end of August, um, we are currently looking at what was budgeted, what has been spent to date as of yesterday, um, total percentage, and then the projected is where I anticipate we probably will end up for expenses. Um, he's on revenues right now, and the same for the revenues. Michelle. I, yeah. Michelle distracted me. All right. So, Michelle, you're actually not doing that for revenues.
I'm, I'm sorry, I gotta, I gotta ask another stupid question.
No, go ahead, keep asking while I go backwards.
Okay.
So I'm looking at, just in the first line, primary. Seven million, and then total to date, two million, percent to date, 36%, and projected, again, up to seven million. How do we, how do we get to that?
That is your tax collection. That is the millage.
That's what you were talking about earlier.
That is the ad valorem millage.
Still coming in, okay.
Correct, yep.
Because I wondered how you could put those numbers together and as a percentage and come up with that number.
And we, we, in the 10 years I've been doing this, we've never been low on what we budget for our ad valorem or any of our millage amounts, simply because that's a pretty easy number that's already figured out before we ever get to the budget. So that comes from equalization much prior to. So overall, the only one that looks, a couple that look a little crazy, but there's good explanations. One of them is actually the jury commission revenues we actually collected this year, jury trials that came in a little later from last year, so those will be applicable to, to now. You also have the elections where it looks like our revenues are super high, but we didn't budget for some of the grants that were kind of going to be coming in for reimbursement of expenses, so that's actually a positive one. Soil erosion is already at 92.26% of their total revenues to date. Some of the other good ones, Central Services is just timely reimbursement from Ogumaw County. Kind of a mixed bag.
Quick question, in our previous meeting, we just, we discussed that we're experiencing more defaults. Is that continuing defaults in property tax collections?
Oh, so that would not be information that I would have?
Oh, I thought, I thought that that's what, so that's why I'm asking, and I.
No, no, yeah. So here's the way that, the way that the County Treasurer's Office statutorily works is they make everybody whole. That's what that tax payment fund is. So regardless of whether or not people are delinquent on their taxes, we get the money.
Okay, in one of our previous meetings, we had discussed that there, there's more delinquencies, and so that, even though that isn't part of the numbers.
Yep, that doesn't, that doesn't affect our budget, because we still get what we're supposed to get through that process, through that statutory process.
But is that process continuing? Is, is that still going on, that we're experiencing higher defaults?
To the best of my knowledge, we haven't seen an increase this year.
Is it staying the same then?
Yeah.
Okay, because in the previous meeting, that was one of the issues.
Yeah, it's been staying a lot studier. It was a little bit higher last year. But not speaking for other counties, our County Treasurer's Office is phenomenal in reaching out, offering options for payments, partial payments and payment plans, and that, I think, is, has been just a big, a big win for people being able to make, you know, hey, I've got $20 I can put down on my taxes this week to keep up.
How does that work on getting payment plans? I've never really understood that process. How's that, how's that go against our budget?
More of a, more of a, for our budget purposes, it doesn't do anything, because that is purely a factor in the Treasurer's Office with how they proceed with collections. Like I said, their job is to make all of us whole that have millage monies that come to us that are collected through the tax people out of the tax payment fund. If we didn't have a tax payment fund, it would be done via bonding. But traditionally, they offer kind of an individual payment plan type of solution. We'll sit down and come up with an agreement with somebody.
I'm sure there's like interest and fees on, on top of that or not, or, or how, how does that work? Because if you pay, if you pay late, I know you're always dinged if you pay late.
Yeah, and I don't know what those are.
Forty percent.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
About forty percent.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Four zero percent?
One, one percent per month plus, what, four percent?
Yeah.
Plus four percent?
If you were three years late, yeah.
Oh, I am saying.
Forty.
He said if you paid late for that whole period of time to come back and make yourself whole.
It's kind of like against usury laws. That's pretty, that's pretty stiff. Okay, I just, I was curious how that worked. Thank you.
So the next slide just shows our overall general fund department revenues to date. Everybody is a little low, with the exception of our jail is actually doing pretty well this year so far. We're more steady in our inmates, and I think just in general this year, there's, there was a lot more preemptive budgeting as far as revenues, knowing what was coming down the pipeline as far as changes in registered deeds collections or changes in fines and fees in the court services. So there was, normally everybody budgets pretty conservatively to start with. Traditionally, we've been like, we were within 1% of our overall budgeted revenues in the last, last audit, but this year, I think it was even more so of people trying to kind of carefully, carefully move forward with that. You'll see the same trend for the most part in the general fund department expenses, which the first half is on the next slide. So overall, Michelle, it was a big, it's a big election year, so we can't really look at elections, in my opinion. Plus, you don't have all your full reimbursements back. So. How much money do you have coming in?
A lot.
Yeah.
According, according to the Bureau of Elections, they've processed our presidential primary reimbursements, and they're finishing up processing the round one grant reimbursements. So, so hopefully, now it's in the Treasury's hands, so when we're going to get that, I don't know.
But it always, I guess one thing I would say, when you look at the percentage versus the actual dollar amount, it looks like such a huge thing, 166% over. It's a difference between 57,000 and 34,000. So, and while every little bit helps, looking over to see exactly how big that budget line item is, is, I think, always important when anyone looks at a budget for that, but most of that comes back through for reimbursements, is what Michelle is letting you know. Some of the other ones that are a little bit higher, ORV Patrol, we are getting, we get 100% reimbursement for those expenses from the state through a grant that the sheriff was able to obtain from the state last year. So we will see a full reimbursement of 20,412.94, in theory, by the end of this year. Our jail actually is trending very low for what their actual expenses are to date. They are just right at 60%, which is a pretty good factor for them at this point. Our Office of Emergency Preparedness is awaiting two new reimbursement, for reimbursements through that process where there's a different fiscal agent that reviews that, and we've learned that it takes anywhere from three to four months to actually get those reimbursements back to us. So that will be more on par as the process rolls down. But overall, I mean, everything's doing really well. Survey and Remon has expended almost their full budget for expenses, but that is payment to those that are actually out there doing the surveying, the land surveying for that processes, and then we receive a full grant reimbursement for those expenses as well. And obviously, once again, this is something that happens in the spring and the summer, because come fall and winter, it is not a great time to walk around and start measuring. The next slide shows you the rest of the general fund departments, and then just the anticipated projected total expenses for the general fund versus what our 2024 budget is. When you see slide 672, it's Department 672, it says Agency on Aging. This one is actually, we used to have years ago, Commission Trio One Aging, that was three counties that banded together to offer services to elder populations of the three counties. We have a couple people that still receive MERS retirement through that, and we have to pay a third of that bill every year. So our third this year was 4,764. Because of the type of plan that it is, that plan has to be funded not only fully, but funded at 125%. So we always pay a little bit more. So hopefully, next year, when we see some returns come through, we'll see it go down again, but traditionally, it's been anywhere from like 1,100 to last year, it was a little over 7,000. That same smoothing technique that they use at the other areas as well. Some of the other categories that are higher are just ones that have been paid in full, like your MAC dues have been paid in full. Capital Control has been paid in full, your debt service control is another one that I just want to touch on. So this is actually where repayments for people who are granted PREs or who were denied PREs. So that's essentially where we have to pay people back money. So if they had a primary residence exemption and we denied it, and then they were to receive tax money back, that's where this comes out for the ad valorem taxes. All of our millage based have some sort of debt control service line item in which residents would be paid off if they were granted that P, PRE that had been denied to them as well. The insurance payments, that is our full insurance for a year as it goes through, so. Unemployment is fully funded for the year. We, we pay in a lump sum based on the year. Let's see, work comp insurance will actually be separated out to the different departments. Each department has a line item. So once we have our workers' compensation final audit amount back in, we go through when we figure out how much each department's portion is and attribute that to a department by department line item. MIDC, we just haven't gotten to the point where I need to transfer money to them yet, because we're still working off of last year's fund balance, because the expenses have been about half of what we anticipated them. Law Library, I have talked to Prosecutor Edwards, and we are going to sit down and review the current Law Library expenditures. His concern is that there are things that have been possibly put onto the agreement that were not a portion of what the plan was supposed to be, that they had discussed for, because they are, at this point, they're, they're out of money to be allocated to them. Your local DHS board.
I have a question on the Law Library. Is that the online and/or hard copies? Because almost everything's done online, I'm just.
Just about, but we do maintain one set.
I know we made, I know we made some cutbacks last year.
Yep, we maintain one set of hard copies, and that is per preference of the judges. And then everything else is online, so, and then of course, as cases and things come through, you're paying for any type of continual upgrades.
Why do they need a hard copy? That's the expensive part.
Because they're judges and they get to say that. I, I don't have a better answer.
Yeah, but we control their budget.
Well, no.
Some people like paper.
Yeah. Thank you, Rex. Thank you.
Right. Right. Okay, there was something that we did last year, like we cut back on subscriptions or something like that, that, that helped out a lot with the budget, I know. And I, I understand we need all that, but, you know. If you don't mind me asking, who's the judge? Okay, so I was just wondering, that wants the hard copies?
No.
Oh, I know that, I know he's the chief judge. Okay, okay, okay. Sure. Sure, yeah, because they don't have access to online stuff, so you can't, you can't. Last year you did, didn't you?
Yes.
Right. Does, does Ogumaw share that cost with us then? Okay. So you kind of like shared the log-ons, basically, is what you're saying, the, the log-ons. Okay, no, that makes perfect sense. No, 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 that's, I, I'm just, I'm not trying to be any way about it, I'm, I'm just curious. Oh, yeah.
Some people like paper.
No, 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 to have, to have one set, it makes a lot of sense. A hard copy makes a lot of sense. Thanks, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Just asking questions, guys.
And I think that's about it for overall. But overall, again, we are looking as if our general fund projected will be several hundred thousand under hopefully what we have budgeted for. The next slide is just a graph again of the department expenses to date. Obviously, the longer lines on most of these are your budget, and the shorter ones are what we've spent to date. The one in the middle that stands out is the jail, which is, as we all know, one of our largest expenses that comes through that. So on the next slide, there will actually be the payroll by fund to date. So overall, the payroll is doing really well. Some of it is because, as in like Sheriff, Sheriff Road Patrol would be one, and then if you look at 911, they're, they're quite slow, but that is because we are also very low on, on staffing, which looks good on our budget, but wears on our employees horribly. So hopefully, as some of the processes that are coming, we'll, we'll see our staffing get back to normal on those, but all of our departments, with the exception of childcare, and the only reason childcare is slightly higher is because we will do age transfer of some funds from the childcare to the Juvenile Justice Fund for grant reimbursement purposes that hasn't happened yet. But overall, things are going really well across the board for our payroll by fund by date. On the next slide, you can see which departments have the most people, basically. Obviously, your general fund again, which is the largest of all of the responsibilities, statutory responsibilities that you fund and oversee, holds the, the biggest advantage spot as far as where our payroll sits, followed by your Sheriff Road Patrol and then Central Dispatching as well. The next slide is a snapshot of our benefits by fund to date. We are slightly high on the general fund. The largest impact of that is, you heard Jennifer discuss, our usage under our HSA, which is the portion that we use to fund the deductibles. We have a lot of people this year who have exceeded, have reached that maximum, so we have paid a little bit more. I will tell you that'll actually end up, that portion will actually end up slightly higher than we budgeted. But that is hard with what we're seeing across the board for our healthcare. Some of the lower figures that you see, again, dispatch at 36.33% when you only have four people working for four months, and you budgeted to have 12 people with benefits, you get a low number.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
This is great. I mean, I'm, I'm getting a lot of information off of this. But on the, in the future, on the bottom line, can we have the total average?
Absolutely.
I mean, it just, it just, because you got some up, some down, you know, so.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Because I know we're under, and, and I have to say something else, okay? This has been a lot of work for Darlene. She's really busted her tail, and I'm not, not doing this, but getting the budgets in the order at the beginning of the year and getting things narrow. You didn't work on all that and stuff?
Oh, we did, we all work on stuff. It's not just me.
But I mean, you worked, you worked a lot with Jody, I know, on crunching the numbers to get things.
I asked questions, is all I did.
I'm sorry?
I said I asked questions. Jody did the numbers.
But I know there was a lot of work that went into getting this budget, so we got the proper numbers up to the. The proper numbers up to the fifteen percent that we needed to get it done and everything like that, and I just. And I know what you did at the beginning of the year, so we would be where we're at now, am I wrong on that, Jody, or not?
I think that Commissioner Censor is definitely um. The strongest voice for making sure that we continue to have a healthy fund balance, so that our county is not caught off guard.
There we go, okay, that's, that's what I thought.
So yes to the totals on the next one, I do. Um, so the next slide shows you the pretty graph again of our benefits by fund by date. No surprise, I feel kind of like a broken record, um, the general fund is our largest employee expenses. Again, we have the largest departments in there and. Most to do, I don't know how else to put it, um, sheriff road patrol, central dispatch come through as well. On the next slide is a general snapshot of our retirement by fund to date. So traditionally, um, we'd be looking at about sixty seven percent again. Um, we are running low in all departments except for childcare, again, with childcare, this is where there's a small portion that comes out. Um, of one employee to be reimbursed um, by another branch funding, um, so it's more of journal entries. Go ahead, Noel. Okay, so we'll be closer, okay, thanks. Um, yeah, but overall, still, you'll be below sixty seven percent, so. Retirement to date is on the next slide via graph. Um, your sheriff road patrol is just slightly lower than half of what your general fund is. That is where um, your defined benefit comes in, that traditional pension. Um, and then in our general fund, a majority of our employees, I would say probably by now eighty seven percent of our employees. Are defined contributions, so just your everyday uh, retirement. Um, as that comes, and then there are a handful that were grandfathered in years ago. For the defined benefit that are, are nearing retirement age of haven't already retired. So the next one. This is a good slide. Okay, so looking at where we're at right now, um, towards the end of August and. Putting together hypotheticals of where we should be, could be, um, at the end of this year. We started January first with a one million five hundred seven, six hundred seventy two dollar and fifty four cent fund balance. Which was little over fifteen percent. Um, we're looking at revenues that'll be slightly lower by about one percent. And year-end expenditures, that'll be slightly lower by about three percent. So we would actually be looking at an increase of our estimated uh, fund balance for twenty twenty four. So as of today, I'm comfortable saying that I, I believe that we should go up at least another percent.
That's what I was talking about.
Ask me at the end of September if I still feel this way, when all of my August billings and processes come through. And I'll have a, a more concrete answer. But we should still be at our fifteen percent regardless. On the next slide, there is an overview of the fund balances for all of our funds for you as of January first twenty twenty four. Um, so this is everything except for the general fund, because obviously they all have their own little savings account, I guess I would say as you go along. To give you an idea of the health of each of those individual funds. Um, specifically, let's go to E nine one one. Um, so E nine one one in the middle of the page, their central dispatch fund balance. It's eight hundred forty three seventeen ninety four, so that's about. Four and a half months worth of operating expenses if they're fully staffed. Um, they do have a capital improvement fund of one point two million. Uh, I know Jessica was in here two weeks ago, when I was in Jamaica drinking food food drinks. And um, spoke about some of the, the issues and things that are needing improvement within, um, within central dispatch. Of course, and unfortunately, when things go bad in a place like that that relies on technology. Um, it costs a lot of money to replace and to fix. So that's where that capital improvement saving comes into play from there. One of the other areas that I want to point out is our childcare fund. Did start the year with a small fund balance of fifty four thousand five seventy four thirty three. Um, this is the first year in probably five years that there has been a little leftover. Um, that is such a small kick in the bucket for um, what can be a large unexpected expense. Um, we had the discussion with the presentation of the childcare fund budget. That um, with the new changes in the laws, uh, we're anticipating uh, more revenue reimbursement from the state. My caution, and I talked to Chairperson Censor on this, is. Don't get all excited and spend the three hundred thousand dollars someplace else that has long-term impact. Um, we need to take a portion of that savings that we won't transfer out in twenty twenty five, and that needs to be invested into. A fund balance for the childcare fund, so we can get to a fifteen percent fund balance. So that way, when the wheels fall off the car again, we've got money in the bank to put the wheels back on. Um, what has happened before? I know Administrator Kalini and I had a year where we had one person that went into a service in a different state. And it ended up going over budget by almost like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that money is transferred directly from your fund balance in your general fund, um, if you don't have a childcare fund fund balance. Which then, of course, has that trickle-down effect to those large groups of people that you see in that high. General fund employee um, brackets that we have there where, where you're thinking, okay. I can count on a one percent raise at least next year, all of a sudden, there's no raises, there's nothing across the board. Because there wasn't any money in a childcare fund fund balance aside for that. So that's going to be um, one of my strongest recommendations leading into the twenty twenty five budget. Is that we look at starting to build that childcare fund fund balance up for those emergencies as well. On the next slide.
You want to buy spongy mark, real quick?
Oh, yes.
Okay, it's, it's only, so if you can go back. Uh, it's only showing eighty five thousand now, they just passed, you know, we, we had a uh, millage increase pass in February. That we all agreed. Put it on the ballot, that passed. When is that income going to start coming?
That actually will be collected in the summer of twenty twenty five spell, because it passed in August.
There used to be like a couple of million dollars in that fund.
Well, this was as of January one, so they've got about two hundred and eighty five thousand right now. This, the fund balance isn't going to show you the cash, that's going to tell you at the beginning of the year.
That's of January one, so.
January one, so we collected the two hundred and four.
Even though the, even though the millage was approved in February, it hasn't gone on the tax rolls yet. So we didn't collect it?
Yeah, we are collecting, yeah.
You are collecting for the Sept- in September, I'm assuming.
Yes. So their budget is about two hundred and eighty five thousand total.
Two hundred and eighty five?
Yeah.
How much revenue is it going to be bringing in, do you think, with the, with the?
I want to say that, I don't know with the increase, I don't know the difference between A and B off the top of my head.
Okay, because I know. Two five, I think maybe up to, was it point five?
Yeah, point two five to a point five. So no, point one two five to a point two five.
Point two five, right, so it's going to essentially double, and what have we collected in the past on a yearly basis?
Last year, I want to say it was about a hundred and forty thousand, so we should collect about eighty.
Okay, so you're saying, so we're going to be able to double that, and. That will uh, help us, they're going to start doing the surveys probably in the spring, correct, again, to find out where to spray.
So they actually survey in the summer and they actually started last week.
Oh, it did, okay, sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
Projected revenue coming in on this bunch, because it was going to be killed, we weren't going to have anything for it, so fortunately, we.
And that is, um, that is one of those positions that, if anybody knows somebody that likes to walk around in the woods for the day. Um, and get paid holidays for a part-time or full-time seasonal position, have them come in. Um, we've got two more people. Um, it's anywhere from twelve eighty three, um, and every year we give them a bump of about a dollar when they do return, so.
Can I get some information on that, I might have some people that might be interested, can you forward that?
I, I will have, um, I'll have Daniel do that for you.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's kind of like my little pet project that I had.
And when he campaigned, he was not expecting to be slammed by people talking about those, so I think that he was caught off guard. Um, so twenty twenty four overall budget health. Um, our anticipated year-end general fund revenues will be roughly one point three percent below what we budgeted. Um, our full collection of the ad valorem tax for the general fund by December thirty first. The current interest collections, this is pretty interesting, so our current interest collections are actually as of today at the budgeted amounts. Um, so based on the input and the information that we had at the time of budgeting. Rebecca makes recommendations for those interest line items for me, um, and then. We're actually already achieved that, so anything else now is extra and will help offset uh, revenue losses and any fees. Um, as we know, the state likes to make determinations on, on collections for county and township, cities and villages. Um, that can, can greatly impact um, those things, I think one of their newest bills they're working on right now is capping how much you can charge for inmate phone revenues now. That's another new one, so. Um, we also have overall expenses that are trending roughly three percent below our budget. Um, that's where you'll get that hopeful increase to our fund balance for the general fund at the end of the year. Um, I squarely every year will say that our department heads continue to. Get three quotes, look at where the most necessary expenses need to come from and go. Um, and try to make very fiscally sound decisions, and that is why, since I have been here. We very rarely have increased our expenses. Um, as far as, hey, I had to overspend, and when we have, it is for really good reason, like. The state of Michigan decided that we had to have some sort of encryption software on all of our emails in order to continue to do core business with them. Um, and so that's one thing I will, I will preach is that, that rests squarely with them for that. Um, all of the special funds, with the exception of the law library, which I think we kicked a few times earlier, um, are trending at or below budget. Our payroll does continue to remain below budget, um, largely um, turnover of long-term employees. Because obviously, if you have somebody hypothetically working for twenty four dollars an hour, you hire somebody enough at nineteen dollars an hour. You're going to see that trend into payroll. Um, and then the staffing limitations in public safety as well come through. Might do want to mention that our wage and salary committee is working on conducting um, wage surveys. For the comparable counties to provide recommendations to the board on maintaining competitive wages. Obviously, it's a recommendation, um, but the way that this was set up, and I'll touch on this while we're doing this. Is to make sure that our, and we're not going to talk about health benefits, this is just what you get paid an hour. That those are. At least middle of the range, so that you don't have great employees jumping ship. And going to work for um, the private sector, where they can make more money. Or going to work for a neighbor in county like Crawford or Wexford, um, or Ogumawal, where. The job that I could do as a corrections officer at nineteen dollars an hour, I could get hired in to work in Crawford County. At twenty four dollars an hour. Um, so that's where that trending information comes, and then the presentation comes to you guys, so that you can see where there may be discrepancies in those wages as well. Um, putting it into a bigger picture, yes, of course, you have to take a total compensation package. Um, if you don't have to pay a dime and everybody else has to pay twenty percent of their health insurance, that wage and that benefit comes into play. Um, but they're gonna, they're going to be kicking everything around. Employee benefits, my favorite topic right now, that was sarcasm. Um, while our overall benefit expenses are under budget, um, we're showing that high usage for our H S A. And that's going to be roughly ninety thousand over what we budgeted, so anything we um, are going to, to save by some of the changes made in our. Employee enrollment are going to be lost by the usage, so we'll, we'll net zero on that roughly. You know, our current premium increases for twenty twenty five are um. Just right now, based on the initial quote back of what we've got for the current plan, no changes, it'd be slightly over eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, that's what that fifty percent premium looks like, so that's, that's not something we're going to do. I know you won't do it, it certainly isn't, so we've got to come up um, with better plans, and I, one last slide and we'll get there. Um, retirement, um, well, didn't put in August yet, but, so basically, our staffing shortages have really played probably. Probably the biggest part in that, um, the defined kind, defined benefits contribution. Just as a reminder from kind of our MERS that we've had, um, you will see every year that. Portion that we pay for defined benefit, which is the traditional pension, will continue to escalate. Um, until about twenty thirty four, so you can expect every year, has it been roughly like five percent that we've seen, Noel? There's a five to seven percent increase every year in what we have to pay into for the pension benefit portion. Um, and we're looking at about twenty thirty four where we were actually. Be fully funded, and at the point that we're fully funded, then you remain flat. And then as people start to first retire and then die, awful. You'll see it decrease again, because we don't, we don't participate in that with most of our, most of our people anymore. The last on here, um. As my mind is switching, because it's tis the season, um, so traditionally, at this point in time, um, we try to have our. worksheets out to our department heads for planning and budgeting for them to look at their budgets, make decisions overall. Um, the budget approval by the border commissioner should be completed no later than November thirtieth, that's thirty days prior to the start of the new fiscal year. Um, in order for the department heads and elected officials to have worksheets and give factual um, numbers. We are going to have to provide to them um, estimated non-union cost of living increases and a proposed benefit increases. For accurate budgeting purposes, because if they're going to have to try to figure out how to budget in a. Even twenty percent minimal increase, maximum increase into an existing budget. That's going to take a lot of finagling um, and workaround for that, and then if we're looking at any type of an increase. Um, across the board for non-unions, obviously, unions already set by contract. Um, that would have to be worked in as well for them to have that, so the board of commissioners, we're going to be on a little bit of crunch time. Um, to nail down changes for health insurance. I'm skipping bullet three, I'm kind of out of order, but obviously, the fifteen percent premium increases for all health benefits. Um, that is the priority for this board at this point, I love our lakes, I love our county, I love everything else that we have to do. But if we can't take care of our employees, none of the other stuff matters, so we have, um, we've got to priority type, prioritize that. Um, I'm asking, and it's a big ask for Noel and I and Jennifer as well, but I would like to be able to have plan options to the boards with pricing in two weeks. Okay, and then results back from the survey from the employees as well, so while you're looking at the plans, you can also look at. What the employees care about when you're looking at a healthcare plan as well. So to me, it'd be looking at plans that have no greater than a twenty percent overall increase. Um, I have talked to the administrative controller up in Denzie County. Um, Jennifer pointed out that they had a very, very, very similar problem to what we have, and they're a very similar sized county. And they are also making some pretty, some pretty drastic changes. In, in their benefits as well, trying to still offer something great. Um, but save cost of money and um, increase. You know, increase the, the awareness of utilization. Yes, obviously, if your leg gets chopped off, you go to the emergency room and you have surgery. But some of the simple things that I know Noel and myself have tried to kind of preach home to people like. Hey, if you're home and you have the sniffles, use the online app, because that is such a low-cost tool. You know. But there are other things that we have not had control over, when you have a year's worth of COVID shutdown for healthcare facilities for everything except for. Literally, your legs falling off, um, everybody comes out and wants knee replacement surgery or back surgery or the things that were denied. Um, we have an average age population of, I believe it's right around forty nine for those utilizations for us. And guess when things start breaking on your body and your knee replacement, um, so we're seeing that. Um, that being said, as I move forward to trying to put together a calendar um, for twenty twenty five budget planning. Last year, I remember at the end of the year, there was a discussion about um. Having the departments present their budget and what goes into their budget. At meeting of the holes to the board of commissioners, because there was a lot of questions from new board members. Um, and if that's something that you want me to work in, um, we've got to come up with a couple of special meeting dates to do that in October. And if that's something that you want me to work in, we've got to come up with a couple of special meeting dates to do that in October.
I have some comments. Mark first, he raises his hand first.
Yes.
Based my decision on. It's a big deal, and I appreciate your time and expertise, but I will listen intently to your recommendations. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to, as we were going through all the numbers, it occurred to me, and I'm going to reiterate this a little, little more than what I did earlier, our fund balance is up, which is very, very positive, and that all started with the leadership of this board. And I'm going to say it again, Darlene did a great job on working with you, Jody. Jody, I'm real impressed with everything that you put together and you working Darlene and, and getting these numbers crunched the way that they need to be. I'm, I'm happy with this, but I'm also really, really concerned about the healthcare issues that we got, that we're going to have to be facing this, this upcoming year. We want to make sure we keep our employees happy. I certainly don't want to diminish that, but we, we also, you know, have to, to be on budget.
It's a balancing act.
It's, it is, it's a tremendous balancing act, and we need to figure out how to do that, so everybody is as happy as it can be. We need, we need employee retention, but we also can't, you know, be spending so much money that it's going to blow our budget out, and it really, it is not, it's not looking good. And, and if our company does go away, then we're in a real jam. As Jennifer was mentioning earlier, if we have to go to, you know, Blue Cross Blue Shield, this company isn't going to be able to afford it, and we're going to have to start making some serious employee reductions. And we don't want to do that.
That's because you come in and see me once a week. That's it, that's all I've got.
As far, I guess the only comment that I have is, as far as the numbers and stuff, that is mostly on Jody and the department heads staying and working within what they have, that I just ask questions, they're the ones that do all the hard work. That's.
Yeah, but you're the leader. It's all leadership.
I don't see it that way, but, okay, thank you. Motions and resolutions. We have none, so we're on to public comment. Any public comment? With no public comment, the meeting will be adjourned. Thank you.